All good. Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of March 6th, 2018. First up is a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Looking to approve the minutes of the last two meetings, February 20th and February 27th.
Make a motion, we approve the 20th and the 27th of February meetings.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Department head and committee chair updates. Does you have any updates?
Do you have any questions?
No. Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Policy governing access to public records.
Okay, so the last couple of meetings, we've tabled this. I made the one change, Elise, that you found. And as we stated in the beginning, this is drawn up from the attorney. Just some minor changes based on the old one. Any questions, concerns, anything else with it?
Nope, looked good.
So we need a motion and signatures, please.
Would you like to make a motion?
Drew, I'll make a motion that we accept the policy governing the public access.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
I don't have an update on this. I haven't spoken to Mr. Lankowski, so I'm assuming they're still working on it.
Okay. Buzzle Road?
I have something on Lankowski's.
On what?
On Robert's.
Well, the only, I mean, it's your call.
Right.
So Flat Ground Road, the instruction you left with is that Lankowski was to speak to the property owners and start working on something, so.
Yes. He's drafting a contract to.
For you to review.
Yep.
Buzzle Road, the road committee was going to meet, I think, Monday night, and you guys were going to talk about turnarounds. So you had authorized them to plow it all the way down once that turnaround was in place. I did pass that on to the District One Road Commissioner. I think that we're waiting for the road committee.
To get the turnaround.
Well, you have to.
Come on up.
Okay. For both of them with the public easements, those will have.
This is Cindy Hart of the road committee?
Cindy Hart, road committee. For both of them with the public easements, they have to go to a special town meeting or a town meeting. I don't, and be voted in because it's an easement on a road.
I thought we just needed permission to turn around. Buzzle Road is Buzzle Road.
The driveway turnaround, when you get to the turnaround, that's one thing that we can do ourselves, that actual part of it. But the part going over the road is different.
I don't think, the end of Buzzle Road's not a private road.
I thought it was private. Well, it's private, we have to go over part of it private. When it goes down in that dip is where it starts to be private.
How do you know that?
Because I've walked it before, and we've gone down, and it may be 50 foot this way or 50 foot that way.
Why is it called Buzzle Road?
I don't know.
If it's not.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's, I think you were here last week. So originally, the board was going to put on the warrant, a survey, and ask the townspeople if they wanted to survey that road to determine where Buzzle Road really ended because nobody can prove where it's ended. So they decided that instead of surveying it, that Buzzle Road, while it was called Buzzle Road, to the end was Buzzle Road, and they were going to have District One plow it and just get the turnaround in the driveway.
Yeah.
So that was the instruction they gave last week. Has that changed?
No.
No.
No, nothing has, well, nothing has really changed, other than the road part is different.
So did the committee work on?
If you wanted to do it totally legally, you'd have to do the road separately, like you'd have to do Flat Ground Road.
I can understand Flat Ground, but not Buzzle.
And Lankowski is handling that.
But the thing is.
Yeah, Lankowski's going to handle Flat Ground.
The thing is, now, you, we've been doing it for years. No, but nothing else is legal, so I would just say, do it this time for this one storm, and then by next plowing season, perhaps you can have them all in place.
Yeah, he's not plowing that without a turnaround.
No, he wants the turnaround, which is the trailer, Williams, and I was told that.
I thought last week we discussed that, we asked the road committee if they were going to do it, if they could do it at the last meeting.
Right, I thought we were trying to get the turnaround done.
I didn't think the turnaround would do you any good without the road, too. I thought you wanted to do it totally legally.
I'm not seeing any part of Buzzle Road private. If it was private, it would be called a different road. It would have a different road name.
Well, we stopped plowing it, there's a certain point, you know.
Well, I think that was different select boards telling the district road commissioner to stop without any reason.
We're still going over part of the private road.
The problem is that nobody knows where the private road is. That's the problem.
Yeah, that's it. So neither one of them really means.
If it's not a different road name, what's the name of the private road?
I, they declared it, I thought it was a town road. When we were going through all of this years ago, Bill Gannon went up and did a lot of work on it, and everybody thought that this was a town road. And it's one we actually needed for the fact that it goes right through. And if it comes to the point that they're working on that canal bridge, it's going to be more important than it is now because.
So what we know, not to, what we know is that, I mean, at some point, since I've been here, at one point, they plowed the entire road. Select board came in, a certain group of selectmen came in, they had them only go to a certain point, so they stopped.
Yeah.
Since then, this board has turned the entire file over to Lankowski. He has said, after reviewing everything, he can't determine where the road ends, where Buzzle Road ends. So he gave the board an option of survey it, and that'll tell you exactly where it ends, or plow it all and just get a turnaround on the end and let the townspeople decide in June if they want to, if they want to survey.
I think, I think.
My feeling is it ends where the next road begins. The next road begins is what?
Isn't it Lakeside?
Lakeside.
Right. So Buzzle goes until Lakeside.
In my feeling, I think you should ask the road, the road committee, how far they would like it plowed. Because, I mean, with your, with your plowing budget, if you picked up a little bit more down there, I think that helps everybody. And, and this was the first turnaround, which may not be your best option for a turnaround. If they actually looked at it, it might make more sense to go a little bit farther down and do it better than in that driveway.
We need to review some minutes because I, somewhere along the way, we lost a piece of something. Because I, I really think the conversation we had last week was that you instructed District One to plow to the end of Buzzle, period, the very end of Buzzle, and that the road committee at their upcoming meeting was going to work on a turnaround.
Right.
That's what I thought. So I contacted District One and told him that they were working on that, and then as soon as that was in place, he was to plow to the very end. And he reiterated that he would not until that came about.
Well, we had a misunderstanding because I thought you were talking about all of the turnarounds.
No, we were just talking about that one.
No, just Buzzle.
Yeah, just about that one.
So how do we handle it at this point? Because you, they don't have another meeting scheduled, correct?
No, we don't.
We need to get the turnaround.
Well, we're turning around in other driveways without worrying about it. I think we could, I think we could make.
He wants it written on paper. He won't plow unless we get it. So that's why, this is our first one we've got to take care of.
Unless he gets a piece of paper, perhaps that could happen with a phone call.
That's what we were hoping. I don't, I don't know the person.
Yeah, I didn't know. I wish you, you know, we, what we need to do is, is all be in the same room and not.
You were here. This is what happened at last week's Selectmen's Meeting.
You know, we need to be together in all of this.
Okay, so how it stands.
And I'll help you in any way I can.
So how it stands for now, so he's not plowing that tomorrow, he's going to continue the method that he's, he's used all of this winter. And does the road committee have time to work on a turnaround for the end, very end of Buzzle Road? Or at this point, I'm sorry, at this point, does the board think we should just wait?
I just thought you'd be better off doing all of them at once. If you wanted to just do one.
Well, we'd like to get started. This one needs to be done.
And you just want to do that driveway?
Yes.
For now.
To get Buzzle.
Give us a partial.
So you can get that plowed this year.
Okay.
And then revisit it.
Okay, I will just need some secretarial help, your notary. We'll see, we'll see what we can do, I can't promise you.
That property goes, is that at the very, very end of Buzzle Road?
Is that 699?
I think so.
It's, it's the first one that you come to when you come in. The dip, somewhere in that dip is where the line is. Then you come up and go a short distance. You've been over it, Kim. And this is the first driveway, but it may not be your best turnaround in a permanent.
Right, but for this year, just.
If you're looking at one storm.
Yeah.
It's not going to matter for tomorrow at this point anyways, because he's not plowing it without anything. I got to look at this.
Go ahead.
Dennis Long.
Dennis Long. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, Ed, in that what is what was said at the last meeting, that you're going to plow to the next road, which is Lakeside Drive. At the bottom of that hill, what you're talking about, is Foley Way goes this way, and Lakeside Drive goes that way. You could not turn the truck around in that intersection.
Right.
So when we decided years ago to do that, they ended up plowing out Lakeside Drive to Ron Crawford's pit, and Ron Crawford gave them, they gave the town their turnaround easement there. And then subsequently, you know, everything changed. The only place you can turn around, unless you go past the bottom of the hill on the Lakeside Drive, is at this 599 or wherever it is on Buzzle Road. Because after there, there's no more places to turn around until you get out on Lakeside Drive. So that's, I mean, the trucks can't turn around at the bottom of that hill. It's impossible.
Yeah, they have to go a little further down.
They have to go further.
And I know the person that owns the trailer had said it's fine.
500 Buzzle Road, that's.
What is it, 500?
It's 500.
Okay.
I'm just trying to see how close to the end that actually is.
That, that is just a.
Well, there's still one.
Very short distance past.
Or lots. Let me just show this to the board.
Yeah.
So this is, so that's the property that they're talking about, the 500. But you can see that, so the road continues to go, I mean, that's your intersection down there. Pass that around.
So is this 699?
No, that's, these are land only.
Yeah, the land only.
Let's see where those, I mean, that's, so what I spoke to District One, I mean, I thought you were saying you wanted to plow to the end of Buzzle Road. So you're going to, you know that this portion is not going to be plowed.
That, and, and I honestly think that Buzzle Road, that the Lakeside Drive and Buzzle Road people will be very fine with that.
That's what they had said.
Whatever, that goes against what the board said. I mean, they either want to plow all of Buzzle Road, or, you want to bring, why don't we bring District One in and try to have a conversation and figure this out?
But I just wanted to give you a heads up, it's impossible to turn a truck around down the bottom of the hill.
Down where Foley Way is.
So you're saying that if we were to go to the end, we would actually want the turnaround easement from Lakeside Drive?
Yes, it's somebody there. And then you're talking another half a mile of road or whatever, where what you're talking about to the, to the mobile home is, where I say is probably 400 feet past where the town line ends.
Allegedly.
You know what I mean? That's what I say, this is what I say, what I say. But anyway, it would cure the problem, and the people up on Lakeside Drive, I believe, from my conversations, they'd be very happy with that. Not doing down over the hill even.
So Elise, I'm going to try to get a meeting scheduled. Who do you want present for this Buzzle Road to make this determination at this point? So that I can, and if they can show, great. If they don't, they don't, the board will make a decision anyway. So obviously, District One.
Yeah.
Do you want to invite the road committee? Do you want to invite at least the chair, just the board?
The chair and Dennis.
Okay. All right, so we're going to get that scheduled within the next week or so, but we know for tomorrow's storm, nothing's changed at this point.
Right.
So I'll try to get that in the next week or so.
Okay. Hazardous Waste Collection Day.
So last week, I gave you the contract for the, with the Town of Acton and the EPI in regards to the hazardous waste day that's coming up on April 28th. I just need a signature on the back, unless you have any changes.
Do we have a motion to sign the contract with EPI?
Make a motion, we sign the contract with EPI for Hazardous Waste Day.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Just one?
Yeah, a second person could sign at the bottom, that's fine.
What's the date?
Six.
Oh, six, that's right there. Three, six. Budget.
When do you want to meet again? How do you want to finish this up?
Oh.
The treasurer, so we know that we've had some items in, some items out. We've got this upcoming meeting. I did let Warren and Finance Chair know that you didn't think it'd be a problem to have the completed warrant before the March 24th meeting. The treasurer has it all but ready to go. We just need some final input from you guys, so do you want to meet again? Do you want to make some?
Should we try to meet before I leave, or the Monday I get back?
So the 24th is the day that we have the meeting with Warren and Finance. I have to think they'd like it by like Thursday, a chance to look at it, so.
Do you get that?
I'm back on the 16th, so the 19th.
Is there any way we can meet earlier in the day?
Yes.
Ed, we can talk about the last couple, we'll see what the weather brings, and we can talk about those last couple of.
I'm not sure if I can make it any earlier, but.
Okay. We can always talk about the last couple of articles and get your input.
Yep.
I think I know where you guys stand, but I just want to make sure.
It'd be available by phone anyway.
Okay.
So what's the date again, Jim?
It's going to be March 19th, and let me talk to Michelle tomorrow, we'll tie down a time. It shouldn't take long, we just need to know your opinion on a couple of the requests.
Dog warrants.
Okay, so, and then there were 10, looking for signatures for those 10.
Down from 40, wow.
Down to 10, so up until today, the late fee was $25. Once you sign that, it's going to go to 50.
And people have tried calling?
We have called, and the animal control officer has left a sign, an actual notice on every single door, so.
I don't think yes is still.
You got to answer, right? So what's our next step here?
So the late fee goes to 50 effective tomorrow, and seven days, he'll start issuing court notices for, appear in court for unlicensed dogs.
Okay. Oh, we have to sign it?
Sign the actual warrant to make it become a warrant.
Oh. New business, June warrant article.
So last week, we had conversations about putting a question before the voters on the June meeting regarding marijuana. I did speak to Mr. Nass today, and he indicated that the Marijuana Committee was going to meet on March 16th, he believes. He's still trying to get a consensus, but at 6 o'clock. And he thought the purpose of that meeting was to put together a draft ordinance for you to look at and hopefully approve to move forward to the voters in June. So my job was just to get you a timeline. The deadline for you to sign an order calling for a secret ballot is going to be April 17th. That's a Tuesday, I believe, if I calculated it right. So that just gives you an idea of how much time you have. It is recommended that you have some public input hearings before then. Because it's a secret ballot, you're required to have an actual public hearing 10 days before the election, the June 12th election. But at that point, no changes can be made. So because it's marijuana, because we voted on it a couple of times, as soon as they get you a draft, you probably should have a couple of public inputs so that the public can make, you know, any recommended changes to the ordinance. And then we'll have one final, when the document's done, 10 days before the election.
Okay.
So April 17th, just a deadline to keep in mind.
It'll come up quick, I'm sure. Nomination papers.
Just noticed that nomination papers for the following seats will be available in the town clerk's office beginning at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, March 2nd, this last Friday. Must be returned no later than 4:00 p.m. on Friday, April 13th, 2018. A minimum of 25, but no more than 100, signatures for the June 12th election. So we have a board of selectmen seat, three-year term. Ed Walsh's term is expiring. Two school committee members, Kevin Perks and Mary Stanton's seats are expiring, and one road commissioner, District Two. So nomination papers for anyone available, anyone interested are available in my office through Friday, April 13th. And we've got that running in the newspapers, website, and everywhere around town.
Atlantic broadband agreement.
So we know that MetroCast took over for Atlantic Broadband. This is the.
Or the other way around.
Yeah, sorry, MetroCast, Atlantic Broadband took over from MetroCast, thanks. Oops, one, two, three, sorry about that. There's the draft agreement. Sent a copy of it to Mike Corey, the department head, as well. Just asking you to read over it. Would like to put it back on the agenda for next Tuesday. I'll ask Mike to be here. He's got a school committee meeting, but thinks that we might be able to get him here first thing on the agenda.
Okay.
But this is for the Channel 26. This is dropping it down to four and a half percent, so that there's a little bit of savings for the townspeople. We talked, I think, a couple of meetings before, if you wanted it to go much less than that, then we need to either look at salary cuts or meeting cuts or something to get it down. Right now, they charge 5%, so it's a drop, half a percent drop.
Fire rescue ordinance.
Fire chief would like to see you put this ordinance on the June warrant to make some possible changes to. I've given you the print-off that he sent over with his proposed changes. Again, he's going to be at next week's meeting to discuss them with you, but hoping you had a chance to review it before next week. This ordinance was originally created when you first joined Fire and Rescue together, and some of them, some of the things in it really only pertain to the initial. So he's looking to make a couple of changes so that you don't have to go by the ordinance every year.
I think one of the changes was that we didn't have to, in the appointment of his deputies.
Right.
We didn't have to go through a weird process, and he could do it himself.
Right, because the way the ordinance stands now is that the deputy chiefs are only valid for one year, and the entire Fire Rescue Commission, all seven people, have to be brought back together to make recommendations for renewals of deputies. So he's looking to have it changed to only read initial appointments, so that, you're right, he can do his own in-house. And then there was a section here that called for a nominating committee. He's looking to do away with that. So really, if you can just read over his proposed changes, we'll bring him in next week to talk about. And then when you, or if you schedule something for marijuana, we can put that on the same night to get the public input on this ordinance.
Okay. Medical reimbursement services.
So we've been having conversations with the fire chief, treasurer, in regards to the current company we have for medical reimbursement, from medical billing. There are some concerns out there, so we've been looking at some other companies now that our contract is expiring. Medical reimbursement services is, has come highly recommended. Treasurer works with this company in another town as well, and we've addressed some of the issues that we're having with the current. Sent the contract over to Burke and Clegg to look at, sent it to the treasurer, she made a couple of changes. So this is just a draft, it has an addendum to it that our attorney wrote, that Medical Reimbursements has agreed to sign off of. Just informational, hoping to get it on the agenda next week for final review. Like to change companies effective April 1st. And again, Chief Johnson will be here next week to talk about that one as well. Because we're talking about a contract, and talking about someone's.
That next one, turn that back.
Want to be careful what we, what we say about the company.
Right.
But we do have the right to change based on the current contract.
So you want us to review this?
Please.
Okay.
Just looking to get billing in a little quicker, get a handle on our reports a little better, and make sure, making the most out of the taxpayers' dollars.
Okay, public comment?
Just two questions. The hazardous waste collection day, were there some hours that you said, I believe?
It's nine to 12.
Nine to 12?
That's a date.
And the other question concerning the same subject, is there any, what all are they going to collect? You know?
They're going to supply a, I think they're going to supply.
I mean, talking tires, batteries, chemicals, paint.
No tires, hazardous waste.
And latex paint is not a hazardous waste, so don't bring it.
Latex paint, you can just.
Yeah, it's not hazardous.
However, they don't take paint unless it's solid.
Right. It sounds like there's going to be a five gallon pail limit per.
I was just curious as to what items that they were.
What did they call it?
What, what items fall into the hazardous waste category?
They actually have a flyer, I apologize for not having it in front of me, but they do have a flyer, and as soon as the board signed this, Bob Mann was going to start advertising it, will put something here, there, and everywhere. But there is a flyer that lists all of the different hazardous wastes that you can bring. It's not in the contract that I can get you a copy of.
Thank you.
We'll start, make sure we start announcing it next week in more detail.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll move on to announcements. We have a blood drive on March 15th.
They may not be in the right order. Some of them don't have papers.
Oh, that's okay. Oh, I see. So Selectmen's Office Hours is this Thursday, 7 to 8, and that will be me attending that. And the blood drive is Thursday, March 15th, 12:30 to 5:30. They like to have you call ahead if you can. Sightwalk for the planning board, 6:00 p.m. on the 15th. Do we know where that is?
I believe there's a printout in there. Oh.
Here we go.
Sorry. Uh, conditional use applications submitted by Mountain Minerals and Aggregates to modify the mineral extraction activity on property at Route 109, map 225, lots 02, 002 and 003. Mountain Minerals? Is that the old Marnark? Marnark Mountain, isn't it?
I think that's the only one on 109.
Yeah. Some more Selectmen Office Hours on the 15th as well, from 7 to 8. That will be Kim there. March 24th, Acton Chapley Lions Club Dinner, turkey dinner, from 4 to 6, at the Chapley Corner Church. It's $8 per person, and all the fixins for a turkey dinner. And the profits go to local charities. Did you want to read upcoming minute, meetings?
Sure. So the upcoming meetings, on 3/8, the Warren and Finance are having a meeting at 6:00 p.m.
Canceled.
Canceled?
Depends on the schedule.
Oh.
All right. On the 13th, Board of Selectmen at 5:00 p.m. On the 15th, there's a planning board meeting at 7:00 p.m. On the 15th, there's also a rec committee meeting at 7:00 p.m. On the 16th, hopefully the Marijuana Committee is going to be meeting at 6:00. The 20th, Board of Selectmen again at 5:00. On the 24th, there's a joint workshop, Board of Selectmen and Warren and Finance, 9:00 a.m. 27th, we've got the Board of Selectmen at 5:00 p.m. And on the 29th, we have the cemetery at 5:00 p.m. They're already starting to look for vendors for the Apple Fest, the Acton Apple Fest. Will this be hanging out in the hallway?
Yes.
All right.
The Acton Elementary School is also having a talent show, but I haven't seen a flyer. I know they're looking for talent.
Shall I sign you guys up?
No. I think they're also looking, if you have a business you'd like to promote, they have a spot to promote your business for a small fee. So if you want to contact the school or the Acton PTG for that, to get more information, you can do that. I think they're also on Facebook. I think that's all I've heard out there in the community. You all set?
All set.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Good night.